Good evening, everybody, and I'd like to welcome you to our continuation of our meeting. So Wednesday, December 20th. And tonight, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Mullen is calling in from the fire station, at Fire Station 72. And may I please have a call to order? I mean, a report on the closed session. After a roll call. I meant to say roll call, and I said call to order. I apologize. Roll call, please. And everything tonight will be from a roll call, because Rick is calling in.
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mullen?
Here.
Mayor Peak?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right. Fran, would you kindly leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Sorry for putting you on the spot. Chris Day, may I please have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's adjourned regular meeting convened at 5:00, at which time we recessed to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The council discussed all the items that are on the posted agenda, and tonight took no reportable actions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember?
Sorry.
Hold on.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to adjourn in memory of the firefighter that lost his life. I'm sorry, all of a sudden, I'm...
Corey Iverson?
That lost his life in the fighting the Ventura fire.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda?
Could I give a brief report on the posting of the agenda first?
You can.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 14th, 2017, and we do not have any public comment.
Thank you, Kelsey. Any commission or city manager update?
I just wanted to let everybody know that City Hall will be closed this Friday at 11:30, as well as the following Friday at 11:30, and we will be closed on Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st. And I wish everybody a very happy holidays.
Thank you, Reva. Rick, did you want to go ahead and start? Do you have any comments?
Yeah. I attended the Metro Meeting in Los Angeles with Mayor Garcetti, and it was quite interesting. They talked about 28 projects that they have to do by 2028 to get ready for the Olympics. Very interesting, none of which involve Malibu, but they're gung ho to get ready for it. Kind of exciting, actually. Just FYI, I personally, I work for the Fire Department. I've been home one and one-half days in December, and I'm at work the next four days, and I've been recalled on Christmas Day. But I'm here at my station, and I'm in the rear of the gear. There are a lot of guys who've been out on the front lines fighting fires for a couple of weeks at a time, and they're, they've done a really good job. And I know there's a lot of human tragedy out there, but our department, the County of Los Angeles, is not taking any chances, so they're fully staffing everything at any time there's any red flag. So you can be comforted by that. They, they did have a fire in Malibu Park, and I was on that, and they put it out in a super short order, and it was a textbook example of two things. One was excellent brush clearance by the neighborhood itself that really set everyone for, up for success. And it was steep terrain, the potential was bad, but brush clearance really made everything great, and it's a lesson for everybody to pay attention to. And the other one was the individual actions of the local firefighters and the, the engine company captains that just really did a wonderful job in very short order of making it, small fires stay small. The other thing is the next-gen stuff, which is about the airplanes, you know, flying over and making a lot of noise. I've been moving forward on that, and I wrote a letter to Congressman Lou's office, who is meeting with an FAA representative. So if anybody has any questions about that or comments, please don't hesitate to send me an email, and I'm getting smarter about it as we go on. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I know that our community and our surrounding neighbors and unincorporated LA County where you are are extremely grateful for the presence of the Fire Department through this extended red flag period, and we appreciate the commitment from you and everyone else that puts on that uniform and goes to work. We're very, very grateful for that, as well as those that are up in Santa Barbara and Ventura right now. And I remain evacuated from our home up there, for the record. But I'm looking forward to going home and grateful that the house is still there. Laura?
I really have nothing to report right now.
Jefferson?
Nothing to report.
Lou?
I have a few things to report. First of all, I want to join you in thanking Rick and his colleagues for watching over us. You're doing a spectacular job, so thank you. And I attended with most of the council members the city's annual holiday event, and it's always terrific. You get to see so many people that are involved with the city and work with the city, and this year's event was better than ever, and thanks to Reva and her staff for a great job. I also sent a monthly meeting of the LA Commission on Alcohol and Other Drugs in Alhambra. Tomorrow, I'm ending a, attending a PCH Task Force meeting, something that Senator Pavly was very active in for a long time. Thank you. And we just got a grant for $150,000 from the California Office of Traffic Safety to improve safety on the PCH, and I think this grant will focus on bicycle and pedestrian safety. As you know, I went to Washington with a delegation of about 20 council members from LA and Orange County to address the sober living homes issue. And we were armed with a resolution from the National League of Cities, which represents 19,000 cities across America. And they unanimously passed this resolution, and that's what we used to actually discuss this with probably a dozen congress members and four senators, including our Senator Dianne Feinstein, who spent an hour with us and is getting her staff to form a task force to find out about what we can do about this. We also met with assistant secretary-level members of the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and these are the people that are going to fix this law, hopefully. In addition to that, our rehab over-concentration legislation, which is in Sacramento, which is completely different from sober living, we've added language from Christie, and that was suggested by the Department of Health and Human Services that, Healthcare Services, rather, that will greatly increase our chances of passage in 2018. Reva and I had a conference call this morning with Cal Strategies about the best way for us to proceed, and I'm planning to meet with legislators when we go up in January for the Contract Cities Legislative Tour, and then again, when we attend the League of Cities Policy Planning Committee meetings, and I think most of us are part of those meetings. And that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lou. I just, the only thing I had to add is that I did visit the Incident Command Center up in Ventura that's been overseeing the Thomas Fire, and I was very impressed with how that's going and just, you know, really grateful at the amount of property that's been saved that could have been so much further threatened, I think, with that. And hopefully, it's something that we, we never have to endure again here, although being prepared for that is something that's imperative. And I think that what Rick said is, in terms of brush clearance, is very important for our community to recognize that, and if you see something that's out of the ordinary, just please report it to the, the authorities by 911 or something as immediately as possible, because, you know, our response time, when we can get to an incident like the fire up on Ramlo the other day, or the one in Malibu Park that Rick referenced, the quicker that the, our Fire Department can get there, the quicker we can get something like that out and save property. So just, that's, that's very important this holiday season, and I'm wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. All right, consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. We're now at item 4A, which is our LA County, or Los Angeles Community Choice Energy. We've heard of that as LACE. Yeah, Gary? Craig? Lace.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and council. I too would like to take the opportunity to wish everybody a happy holidays, and thank you all for all of the, everything you've done for everybody, staff-wise, this year. Appreciate it very much, and Reva, too. I'd also like to thank all the firefighters. I live in Ventura, and I would, I can attest, because I was watching the fires at the end of my block, and all the work the firefighters did, and they did a fantastic, they're continuing to do a fantastic job, and I'm sincerely appreciative of that. Moving on. Tonight, we're here on this important night and an important meeting, happens to be a special meeting, but for final consideration, really, of community choice aggregation and how the city wishes to proceed with that. So there's a couple of things, just some things I'll discuss first tonight, and then hopefully, I have two people here of very significant importance. Gary Gero from the LA County Lace Program to answer any questions in regards to that. Also behind me is Paul Huler from Bright Wave Energy, who is our energy consultant, both for the SolarCarport and for the CCA programs. So I went too far there. So as far as the, the community choice aggregation, what, what we've considered so far are these three options. The Los Angeles program, the South Bay Clean Power, and the Lancaster Choice, California Choice Energy Authority program. Each of these programs has presented to the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee and received direction to bring to council. Each of these programs has made a presentation to city council to discuss their program, and we've discussed at council here some of the things and options that we can do. At the last council meeting, when we discussed community choice aggregation, we did a few things. One, which was to direct staff to review the Luskin Report that was commissioned by the City of Santa Monica. That report was released, the draft report, in late November. The final report was released in early December, and because of that, that kind of necessitated some of the actions we're doing, and it actually necessitated this special meeting tonight so that we can, if we choose to do so, adopt the ordinance for the JPA for the Lace Program. That has to be completed to be in Phase 1 by December 27th. So I kind of see this as really strategically the best time to really consider this. We have, we know everything about the program and all of the things that we've considered in regards to the other community choice programs, and I think it's, it's going to be council's decision if they want a community choice aggregation, and if they do elect to do that, staff is recommending we adopt the LA County program as the Lace Program. Just to go over quickly with the Luskin Report provided to the City of Santa Monica, they did not make a direct recommendation for which option to choose. What they did is considered a number of things about each of the programs, and then gave guidance on what the, what the City of Santa Monica, as well as the City of Malibu, could select. The main things that they pointed out, and there's several others, and if you wish, I'm sure Gary can talk about that as well, is there are a lot of cities that have already joined the Lace Program. It's an up-and-running program, and I think Gary would agree. There's even some cities that are joining here in December, not just the City of Malibu. And I don't know, what's the total we're up to now, or you're up to? So we're up to considerably more. I mean, it's taken a huge leap in these last two months. So they're up to, as Gary's saying, 27 different cities now join the Lace Program. It's a financially expedient option for the city. It's, it's probably the best option that we can look at. It, it has minimal involvement for city staff, and by what I mean with that is that staff will still be involved, but it doesn't require, like, staff positions to operate the program, such as the Lancaster program. It's, it just doesn't take a lot of staff time, it just takes some staff involvement. And then finally, there's no financial commitment to the Lace Program. Those are already sponsored, as you've heard before, by the County of LA for the putting in the seed money of $10 million. So then, we'll talk briefly, if you decide to move forward tonight, with staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance. There is the Lace representation. At the last meeting, Skylar Peak, Mayor Peak, was appointed as the primary person to represent the city in the Board of Directors. We really need to select alternates if we approve that, if we move forward with this tonight. The alternates, as stated here, can be an elected representative, city staff, or a community member. Staff is recommending that an additional council member, so there would be two council members, as one is the, the prime person, the other's the backup, since this is something that represents the people of Malibu, and then appointing probably one staff person. If the two, if the two directors that are appointed cannot make that, then the staff would attend and advise them of what the meeting was doing. And then lastly, we're just, as I said, we're recommending, if the council decides that for the City of Malibu, the best thing is to adopt a community choice aggregation program. We're recommending the first reading of the ordinance 429, which approves the JPA for the Lace Program and authorizes the implementation of the CCA program. We're also asking to designate the mayor to the Board of Directors, which was already done, but just confirm that, and appoint two alternates, and then authorize the city manager to accept the necess, or to execute the necessary documents. So we've provided in the staff report quite a few documents between the Luskin Report, the implementation plan for the Lace Program, the financial report, and a number of other things. They're quite voluminous documents. I'm anticipating council will have a lot of questions about that, or may have questions about that, and for that reason, I had Gary come tonight to be able to respond to you. And with that, I will leave it open for questions.
Thank you, Craig. And we didn't, do we have any public speakers on that, or no? No? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Gary or for Craig? Okay. Does anybody want to, is anybody opposed to doing this? Because we're going to have to appoint somebody as well to that position at this time? Is that correct, Kristi?
There's a couple of things you need to do. If you're deciding to go forward, we're going to adopt an ordinance and approve the JPA, and then you'll also appoint the, so...
I just, I wanted to thank you, Craig. It was a really good agenda report. I thought the Luskin study, they did a really good job just delineating the, the different options, and I think it's pretty clear that our city should adopt the Lace Program. Oxnard just did it last night, and a lot of the, are adjoining, or cities that are near us, Thousand Oaks, Calabasas, Agora Hills, West Hollywood, which isn't very close, but Santa Monica, I think, you know, there's got to be a reason why they're all doing it, and I think that we should join, and I would, Skylar, you're mayor through, through next month, or through February, or?
Yeah, through February. I, go ahead.
So I, I mean, I just, maybe you could stay, and then I would ask maybe for Rick to be the other person, and then Reva to decide who the staff person should be. That, I would just make a recommendation for you two to be the, the designates, or the, the members of that. That's...
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. That was a motion.
Do you want to ask Rick if he's down with that?
Rick, are you down with that?
I love that Lou and Laura, that sounds like they got their bags packed and they're checking out. It's appropriate, and I agree with you totally.
I, I, I mean, that's not true, but, but I think that for the long term, I think that this is going to be, you know, a, a learning curve for everybody, and really making important decisions over the next year, so I think it would be good for both of you to be on that.
We're always here for you, Rick.
Yeah.
Totally concur, and I appreciate the mentoring, and we're up to it, so no problem.
So, so the motion is staff recommendation, designating the mayor, and the Mayor Protem as the representatives, and introducing on first reading an ordinance of the City of Malibu, approving the Joint Powers Agreement for Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority, and authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program.
Can I just change one thing on that? Because I think that rather than the mayor, Mayor Protem, just Skylar and Rick, they happen to be the mayor, Mayor Protem, but I think that things will change, and I think we need to have some continuity over...
Make that council members...
I also, based on the outcome of this, I think I'm going to attend a training tomorrow in Beverly Hills that has to do directly with this.
Make it council members, Peak and Mullen.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gary and Fran, for coming. All right. We're now at item 4B, which is the continuation of the ZTA 17-004, which is in regards to medical cannabis. And as those of you that are here know, and maybe those of you that were not here, we did begin this item at our previous city council meeting, and due to a time-sensitive issue, quorum-related issue, we were unable to complete the item at that time, and we're going to be completing it this evening. We do have a couple of different public speaker slips. We've already received the staff report in regards to it, so if it's okay with council, I'll go ahead and start with public comment, unless you guys would like to receive a preliminary report from Bonnie, or anything. Is that okay if I start with public comment? Okay. All right. So we're going to start with public comment. John Maza, followed by Graham Clifford, followed by Don Schmitz. And if...
Are we closed? We're taking it. Yeah, we did, but we're, now we're taking it.
Okay.
So if any, go ahead, put a speaker slip in.
Yeah, Yvonne, if you'd like to speak, or if anybody else that's here would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. We've received a lot of...
It's the first time we've ever been criticized for allowing.
We seem, we just received a lot of comments. So Yvonne, if you would like to speak, or want a few words, or anybody else, please go ahead and turn in a slip to Kelsey.
I mean, I, I take her point that we had decided that we were closed public speaking, and so there, we're not hearing that, but I think that we can all remember everything that everybody else said, so...
Correct.
But yes, I know. I agree.
All right, John?
Okay. Good evening. Merry Christmas. By the way, if somebody has a black one, F-150 out there, the lights are on. I want to be very brief. The reason I'm speaking is asking the question, why do we have to rush? This retail and, and delivery and all this stuff is going to be a big deal next year in, in LA, and all of California, and a lot of cities are dealing with either turning it down or starting it, and not knowing what police actions have to be taken, what, what laws really work and what don't. And Malibu's a small city, so I think we have the luxury of waiting and, and finding out how it works out, and what, what specific issues will, will be presented to Malibu. There's also a factor here in the CUPs that we've given out for medical marijuana weren't designed for the additional traffic. And so there, and Bonnie has told me this is true, there's going to have to be amended CUPs, and that's going to be really hard. I don't want to comment too much on it, because I'm in the Planning Commission, but there's parking issues and there's traffic issues. The only other comment I'd like to make is that we, we have to watch out for commercial growing. It's, they're big time... The only other comment I'd like to make is that we have to watch out for commercial growing. It's their big time operations. If you've ever read Katie Arnoldi's book about Point Doom, it's about commercial growing and burning down Malibu. And we've seen recently in the Planning Commission, people coming in and wanting to install greenhouse, large greenhouses on their houses. One has five large greenhouses. So that's another issue that we really should study a lot before we just charge into this in, what, nine days? It's just, I see no reason. There's 13,000 people in Malibu, probably 8,000 of them live here. How many of those are sick enough to have to have medicine? And the way we have the thing set up is their caregiver can accept the delivery at the store. So there isn't a huge demand, and so there's something that won't be detrimental to the city to wait six months a year and figure out how to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, John, Graham, and Graham, you're followed by Don Schmitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for letting us speak. I was unable to make the December 11th meeting because I've been out of town quite a lot lately, so I do appreciate the opportunity. I would like to support what John just said. And I'd also like to point out the fact that the Department of Transportation, the Department of Transportation restrictions on the delivery of marijuana or cannabis, as it's now referred to, is still not in place. So you don't know what the Department of Transportation is gonna say anyway. So that gives you yet another reason to wait and find out what restrictions are gonna be put in place. Secondly, one of our pot shops has already been caught delivering in violation of their CUP, which I believe everybody knows about. And item six of the recent Zoraces recommendations explicitly states that to obtain a delivery permit, the dispensary must be in compliance of its CUP. So that eliminates one of our dispensaries immediately from any consideration of deliveries at this point in time. So that's another reason not to pursue it right now. In 1996, Prop 215 was passed, which was the Compassionate Care Act, which has been widely and systematically abused and ignored ever since. And then in 2016, Prop 64 was passed, which is the AROMA, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. You know, I voted to legalize marijuana because I thought it would take the criminal element out of the present situation and get the cannabis cartels out of Malibu and out of everywhere else for that matter. It seems to me that I may have not been exactly correct in that assumption because medical marijuana is still gonna be exempt from taxes, which still leaves this massive loophole for abuse. So I just think, quite frankly, we're a small city. We have two marijuana facilities at the moment, both in the 22,000 block of PCH, stepping on each other's feet. And I just don't think there's, out of 13,000 residents, I can't imagine more than 10,000 of them have a legitimate medical need for marijuana. And 10%, if you take 10%, that's 1,300. So, you know, the most studies say that it's more close to 2%. And the rest of it's actual recreational use disguised as medical use. But so I just think we should be sensible and wait and take our time and see what, if any, criminal activity is attracted to the new regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham, Don, and Don, you're followed by Yvonne Green and Sam Boyer.
Evening, council members. I have a different perspective than the previous two speakers. I'm here on behalf of the dispensary, the legally approved and operating legally dispensary that is not doing deliveries. I'm not opining on the other one. I'm just saying that it's been intimated that there's a problem. There's not. We have not been engaging in any deliveries. And in fact, we will have to amend our conditional use permit to allow it, and we will process that application dutifully. But a couple of things. First of all, this is not some mad rush. We've been studying this for months. It's gone to the Zoraces, it's been to the Planning Commissions before you now, and it's extremely focused strictly for medical cannabis. This is not for recreational use of marijuana. The issue of traffic was brought up. I don't understand. How is it if you allow the delivery of medical cannabis to the customers by one vehicle, somehow that's gonna have a deleterious impact on parking and traffic as opposed to having multiple people drive from all over the community to the dispensary? That just defies logic. It's not going to be a problem. Look, I understand that we may be a smaller city, so this is medical cannabis. This is not recreational use. This is medicine. This is creams. This is topicals. This is edibles. It's all sorts of different products to help people that are sick. And if you deliver the medical cannabis to them, that is a matter of pure compassion, and it's appropriate, and that's why you started going down the path to deliberate on this. I appreciate the time that staff's put in this. I did raise the issue as it pertains to the privacy. And I would urge you again to strike the component whereupon somebody from the Planning Department can, with 12 hours' notice, go on a ride along. I think that that is a privacy issue, and I'd like you to address that if possible. I do think it would be appropriate to be consistent with the theme spread throughout this entire report and your past condition use permit actions, that you have licenses from the city for the two approved dispensaries, so you maintain control as it pertains to the appropriate outfits running the medical cannabis aspects of it. And then lastly, I do think that seeing as we are talking strictly about medical cannabis, that it would be appropriate that you follow the recommendations from the Zoraces to allow the two dispensaries on a limited basis to have cultivation within the confines of the limitations that you've already discussed within the city of Malibu. It makes sense, and it is, again, something that you could very closely regulate. So with that, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Yvonne?
Good evening, City Council. I just want to express my disappointment in opening up the public comment when I know it's always good to have open public comment, but when there was 25 speakers last time and half of them didn't get to speak, most of them were seniors and veterans who came to speak in favor of a temporary permit for the dispensaries to be able to have adult-use recreational sales and also to explain how delivery affects them and for them not to be able to be here to speak because it was said that public comment was closed. It was really disappointing. I just thought I would share that. I want to thank planning staff. I know it's always so challenging with these laws constantly changing. One of the main ones we wanted to make sure the city knew was that medical marijuana is being taxed, the 15% excise tax on top of sales tax, which basically taxes out other businesses here in Malibu due to our sky-high rocket rents and our limited number of patients and what would be clients. We're not in Los Angeles. We don't have millions of people that could, you know, possibly come into our shop like the gentleman that spoke earlier. There's, you know, thousands if that, and in the winter that goes even lower. So the agenda does say that it recommends to ban temporarily or at the time being. So because it does recommend that, we are asking that it not be banned and that we get a temporary right to apply to the state, which the city will lose these tax dollars that are gonna come in. We don't know how much that is, but it could be significant. You know, when Mr. Lamont mentioned that there was a $150,000 grant, well, that's great. This would be a lot more money than that that could go towards our city and so many programs that we need. But if the city doesn't decide tonight to give us a temporary permit for adult-use sales, then it's over. The city of Malibu will no longer be able to have those tax dollars and funds and grants that are coming in from the state. As far as delivery, we're very happy that it's being regulated. We would like to say that nobody knows better than us, with all due respect, how and who needs delivery, and it's seniors, it's the disabled, it's people that just cannot come in. And we'd like to see the provision that says that somebody has to come in first and sign up and all this rigmarole that could be avoided. The whole point of delivery is for them not to come in, keeps them off PCH, keeps parking clear. And we just think that's an important thing to remove.
Thanks, Yvonne, Sam.
Thank you guys so much.
Evening, City Council. I wanted to, once again, follow up, I guess, first talk about delivery and the... Two things, we worked a lot with the Planning Department to get the delivery regulations lessened. And there was a couple of things we didn't get to, which I wanted to talk about. One was having to have to have delivery patients come in at first for delivery. There's many things that makes it more difficult for patients to do that. And also, it makes it easier for the black market delivery services to continue operating and makes us less viable for anybody else because if people can just call somebody else instead of not have to go somewhere else, it makes it more difficult for us. So if we could work on that, and also only having two delivery permits per license, you know, there could be a need for three or four different delivery cars at one time, and limiting to two delivery permits per license, I think it'd be better just to have it one delivery permit per shop, and then we can operate our business however we see best, based on how many cars we need to do deliveries. And then I wanted to move on to talk about the need for recreational sales and recreational, temporary permitting of recreational sales here in Malibu. The sooner that we can do that, obviously it'll make it better for us to be more competitive. The market's gonna shift dramatically from a pure medical market to a recreational market, and we're gonna have extra taxes, extra regulation. And many of the clients who are medical now are gonna switch over to recreational, and many people who are coming into the market are gonna be recreational. And the sooner that we can get our licensing going, our temporary licensing going, until full licensing going will make it better for more viable as a business for us to be able to sustain through all the extra regulation and permitting fees that we have to come up with. There's a large permit fees now to the state. There's extra taxes to the state. There's extra regulations and more money we have to spend to be able to abide by all the regulations that are coming up. So as soon as we can get to a recreational license here, that'd be really beneficial for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else speaking? No? All right. Counsel, I don't know, Riva? I mean Laura, not Riva. Rick, did you have any comments?
Yeah, but I don't need to go first. I think you want me to.
I have some comments.
I don't need you to go first, but I did actually want to add before all of us go is that there was a couple of different things that were mentioned in the comments tonight. First off, we do very much, I know that I remember the conversation that came from people. I remember the room that we had, and I did see a lot of the people that were described that were here that night. And I know that those of us that were here, you know, that's very much, I think, impactful on the decision, you know, process that's related to this. And I think that we all recognize that those that do need, you know, medical cannabis, the service of having delivery is something that would be very helpful to them. So just to add that. And there was a, I'm just gonna read this cannabis tax part of the staff report, which is under AMA, there's a 15% state excise tax on recreational cannabis. However, medical cannabis is exempt from state and local sales tax altogether. The rationale is that the cannabis consumed for truly medical purposes is no different from conventional pharmaceuticals, which are also exempt from federal, state, and local sales tax. However, other forms of sales tax can be levied on all cannabis, whether medical or recreational. For example, a cultivation tax, a manufacturing tax, or the most common, a business license tax, may be levied at the local level on any commercial cannabis activity with voter approval pursuant to Prop 62.
Let me just jump, may I just jump in real quick?
Well, I was gonna correct you. Go ahead, but you do it better.
So the excise tax is new. That's with the, and that is gonna be on all cannabis products, so medical or recreational, and that's a new thing. Currently, medicine is not taxed. So if the operator is, or the distributor, the collective, is properly getting identification and using the card, there's an exemption, and so it would be exempt from the sales tax currently. I think going forward, the sales tax exemption is also gonna be lifted. So there's no question that the proposition, starting in January 2018, is intended to impose a lot of taxes on this business. So that is true, going back. I think one of the things the staff report is alerting the council to is that we can add to that tax party if we'd like. We can put a ballot measure on in November of 2018 if the council wanted to impose an addition, make, not medical, we can't tax that, but recreational sales legal in Malibu. We could add an additional tax, and some cities have done that, put it to the voters whether to make it lawful and with a tax.
Thank you.
Well, I have a comment.
Lou?
I have a couple of comments, actually. Chrissy, am I correct in assuming that the only two things that we have to decide by January 1st is recreational marijuana, whether we're gonna ban it or not, and to deal with the six plants that people are allowed to have by state law? Are those the only two things that are necessary by January 1st?
Yeah, basically, but let me just say something. What we're recommending is putting in the ban on recreational in order to buy time for you to have a more robust conversation about it and the various ways that you may or may not want to allow it. So that would be, so we, I mean, it's my understanding the mayor has asked at the last meeting that we bring back in February a business license ordinance for you to discuss that proposal. So yes, and the reason you want to do that is because that is what the League won for cities, is that local control. They're not gonna, state's not gonna give licenses until the city says we are a jurisdiction that will allow it.
But we don't have to decide by January 1st whether we're gonna allow medical marijuana deliveries. Is that right?
Well, that's right.
All right, so basically, the only two things that we have to decide is whether we're gonna ban or allow recreational drugs, and we have to put in place regulations for the six plants that people are allowed to have, which are in this ordinance now.
Because we currently prohibit deliveries.
Right.
So that would continue to be a prohibition if we don't make it allowed.
As far as I'm concerned.
Go ahead. So we would be getting the ban in place for recreational adult-use sales as well as commercial cultivation? Is that, because that's also a licensing issue in January 1? Is that what you, I just wanted to clarify that.
The six plants, he means just to allow what the state requires us to allow.
Just that. Those are the only two things that have to be decided by January 1st. And my feeling is that's exactly the two things that we should decide. And anything else as far as medical marijuana delivery or permanent or temporary licenses, I think is not something that we should be discussing now. My feeling is that what we should do is exactly what it says in this ordinance, which is ban commercial sales at all completely, the way it's in this thing. And I think that we should regulate the six plants that people are allowed to have in their house. their house, it's exactly the way it is in here, but I think we should strike everything that has anything to do with medicinal marijuana delivery completely out of this resolution. That's my particular feeling. Uh, and I think this is something that we need to do. You, starting January 1st, my feeling from what I'm seeing in the state of California is chaos. They're changing rules up till last week. They don't know what they're doing at all. The state of Colorado, you know, has got, has been had this for almost two years now and it's still confusing there. And, you know, basically, you could take the entire state of Colorado and put it in a corner of LA County. They have 5 million people in the entire state and they can't get their act together. We have 40 million people in California and with so many differing reviews, that there, oh, people had voted for Prop 64, or in fact, some of the authors are questioning whether there are some, uh, provisions in the latest set of rules that will allow the same kind of thing that happened with rehabs, which essentially is to give a license for six people and there's, there's no limit to who the next person is, they could get multiple licenses. And pretty soon we're back in the, in the throes of big medical or big marijuana or just giant corporations doing what we're supposed to try to maintain as a small, personal, six-plant thing. That's what was decided by the voters. And when we talk about how many voters in, in Malibu voted for this, I have to tell you, voters in Malibu also voted for Prop 47, which was a disaster, Prop 57, which is another disaster, Prop 109, which is another disaster. So the voters can be wrong. And I think in this particular case, they're not sure of what's happening. And I think in this headlong rush to get everything legalized, we're making a big mistake and we need to take our time and think about this. We have time to do this. The only two things we need to do is ban it and control what's left. That's exactly what we have to do. And other than that, I don't think we should do anything else and change it. As far as medical marijuana is concerned, we have two suppliers of medical marijuana that seem to be doing a fine job. Um, this green one, all kinds of awards for doing such a wonderful job doing it. So I think we should keep them there. And the reason I don't think we need to have any kind of emergency permission to sell, uh, recreational marijuana is because there won't be any competition in town. The only two people that will be doing it will be the two people that we already have. And, uh, I think they're doing a fine job. That's what I have at the moment. And I'm willing to listen to everybody.
I like that passion, Lou. I like that passion. Maybe don't like the direction of it, but I like the passion. Rick?
Yeah, I have a few comments. Um, I, and, uh, you know, this whole, this whole thing kinda reminds me of, in a way, um, if you look back in, you know, the early 20th century, then, when they had prohibition and then there was a transition out of that. And during the prohibition time, there was a lot of crime, a lot of violence, a lot of organized crime. And, you know, we have the modern equivalent today with, you know, Mexican drug cartels and that type of thing. And one of the, uh, things that I noticed in the staff report was the comment that the, um, on page five, it says, "By legalizing adult use of marijuana, the AUMA aims to undermine the black market for cannabis and place cannabis purchases into illegal structure with strict safeguards, blah, blah, blah." And I agree with that. I've always thought, thought that, um, by this path toward decriminalization and legalizing, you're gonna take the wind out of the sails of a lot of the violence and crime that goes along with it. But where we are in that transition is we're kind of in a little bit of a, uh, we're inching forward and then we're still kind of in, uh, purgatory and then we're trying to find our way. And a lot of the things that Lou said are kind of correct. You know, the, the federal government still says it's illegal and the whole thing's like a cash-based system and eventually, probably, I'm guessing they'll come on board, but we're still, um, as a country, kind of inching our way forward and feeling our way forward. And I, and I do think it's, it's important to be, mm, a little cautious and maybe take our time and see how everything kind of unfolds. And it, there's a sort of a potential tsunami that's about to break on the shores of California here on January 1 and, uh, we can be cresting that wave or we can be hanging back and see if it's gonna be a gnarly, you know, beach break for all the people who jumped in first. And considering we're in a little pee-wee town, it's probably best for us to be cautious. And I think his comments about, hey, we have two fine establishments that have, um, won some awards and are, are noteworthy, members of the community providing a medical service, which is how, what their, um, permit is all about. They're addressing the medical needs and, uh, they've been a fine job. And some of the things that I read in there, and even the letter from the lawyer representing one of the establishments talks about, um, uh, you know, people are gonna, it says, here's what it says, on page 43. "It appears that medical marijuana patients are no longer maintaining their physician recommendations because it is cheaper and more convenient to frequent a non-medical dispensary." In a way, that almost seems like it's, um, for, and I'm not that literate on this stuff, but it seems like it, it's, uh, the facade of the whole medical thing might be falling away. And, um, was it a facade or was it truly medical needs? And if these are truly medical, um, establishments and if they're truly needy medical patients that have a prescription for it, then I think they'll probably continue to do fine. Um, as, as far as the delivery goes, I'm trying to figure out what the actual compelling need is for delivery. I mean, I get prescription drugs myself, uh, actually, one of them's an eye drop, so I only get one prescription drug. And periodically, I stop by the pharmacy and I pick it up. And I, I called one of those pharmacies today in town, I said, "Do you guys deliver?" I mean, these guys wanna start delivering, is that something that you do? And they do deliver, but it's a very, very small part of what they do. So I would say, I agree with Lou on, on this. We have some, two good establishments that have a great reputation, that are doing a fine job, and we're about to head into, um, the rapids, so to speak, possibly. And hopefully, when all is done and said and when the dust settles, we'll all be on the length, lake of tranquility and, uh, crime will be eradicated and we'll all be running through poppy fields and joining hands, but it's unknown what's gonna happen in the next year or so. So I agree with Lou, let's continue what we're doing, let's, you know, ban whatever we have to do to be in compliance with the laws, let's not go toward recreational stuff just yet, but certainly not entertain any commercial level growing. And let's respect the state's directive to let people grow their personal, um, plants, which I'm assuming that then they can do for their own recreational needs. And, uh, that in itself is gonna be a interesting transition. So those are, those are my comments.
Thank you, Rick. Jefferson?
Thank you, Skylar. So a number of complexities come about in my mind. Not that we're after, we're pursuing something that we shouldn't be doing, but my question here is constantly about the timing of things. At 1:15 this afternoon, I received an email with four letters that were turned in to the city. One from one of the, uh, participants in the dispensaries here in, in Malibu now, the 99 High Tide. Um, another one from the personal owners, um, another one on, uh, excise taxes, another one from a personal individual, all dated today. And I understand everybody trying to help us find a clear path for decision-making and I can appreciate that. But if you look at this, what I received, it's all very late. It's too late in the game. And I said last week, six months ago, I talked to one of the owners of a dispensary and their manager and said, "This should've been done the day you, the 64 was passed. You should've been having your people, your people that you encouraged to work with you, your attorneys, and the people that need the product should've been with their groups getting this prepared for us." And it's just late to the game for me. And I was gonna ask the city attorney for some real clarity on this because I think it would help me in decision-making. Tonight, we're deciding two items. And it's what Lou referenced about buying time for recreational and the quantity of plants that were permitted to allow people to grow on their premises. So are those the two decisions? 'Cause I read through the staff report here and they found some clarity in the staff report, which I identified with.
So there's a third thing, which is that...
Hold on, I think a little bit of that gets cloudy from some of the comments that you get from people 'cause they kinda drift into different areas that weren't necessarily what the conversation is about specifically related to the item.
I'm, I'm asking for that clarity, um, because it's so very quickly been thrown at us. Thank you.
Um, so, so at some point, um, the council will have before it squarely before it the issue of, um, adult use or recreational marijuana. But what's before you tonight, um, in part came from a council direction to, um, prepare a zone tax amendment that would allow delivery from the existing medical marijuana, which is not, there is no deadline to it. It's a complete policy choice. But it's here because you asked for it to go through the process and it has. So now it's up to you, yea or nay. So that's on here. And then what is, um, coupled with it is the staff's recommendation that you adopt, um, a ban on commercial or recreational cannabis for now as a, um, stopgap until you have the conversation early next year. And then with that, um, to adopt a, um, the limited cultivation that is required by state law in order to make it clear that you're otherwise prohibiting, um, cultivation until you make a decision when that issue comes squarely before you next year.
Okay, so I appreciate that. I wrote all of them down and I wait for...
There's a lot to write down.
I got it. Thank you.
Laura?
Okay, um, a few questions. If we, um, do not allow, if, if, let's say we decide in March to allow recreational sales and we don't decide by the end of this year, does that mean, um, as a couple of speakers said last time, and I think Yvonne said tonight, that we then lose out on any of the tax money?
So there is no tax money that comes to the city. The excise tax that is going, is gonna be all to, um, the state and 20% of that, the, the proceeds of that tax is going into a fund called the State and Local Something or Another Fund and Law Enforcement, I think, and Something Funds. And, um, the use of that money is gonna be for grants that will be, um, to state as well as local agencies that apply for them. They can only be used for, um, certain purposes, um, fire prevention, law enforcement, and dealing with the health and safety effects of, um, allowing cannabis. And, um, they are, to be eligible for any of those grants, a city has to allow both, um, cultivation and, uh, adult use sales. So...
Could you, knowing if we do that in the future, does then that make us eligible for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you're wrong, too. I, I, I believe that you have to have done it by January 1st.
To be, to be immediately eligible.
To be ever eligible.
So the idea is that you're, okay, that's, so that's a big issue, Christie. If it's forever eligible, that is a way different discussion than if it's sometime in the future we decide to do it.
Okay, well, Christie's looking that up. Oh, you have it right there? Okay. No, I, I just thought you needed a little time, but if you don't...
I'll take the time.
Okay. So, um, Jefferson, uh, you talked about, and, and part of it is, um, I did get an email yesterday from Yvonne that I sent on and so I just didn't have a chance to send it on yesterday. I was waiting for some information from Christie. So it wasn't just all today. And, and I actually am the one who's always saying to people, gee, you know, don't send us information the last day, but actually, I, I find it a little disingenuous because you often reference things that we get that day as having persuaded you. So I think that it's important to be consistent about that. And I, I also think, and John, you mentioned this too, unless you've done a study about how many people need deliveries of medical marijuana, I, I don't quite understand how you are an expert in being able to say, "Well, people don't really need deliveries." And I would say that to you too, Lou, um, because...
I'm asking for time to do a study. That's the reason I'm saying it.
Well, I think that we need to listen to the people that are providing the medical marijuana now. I think it does actually help with parking and traffic to be able to deliver it. And I appreciated what you said, Rick, sorry, I can never know where you are. But, um, I think that there are a lot of people that have to rely on other people to pick up their drugs from a pharmacy and not everybody, and if you look at medical marijuana, a lot of people use it for debilitating, um, illnesses. And so it is very difficult to get somebody, uh, to be able to get in to, um, to be able to pick it up. And so I am very much in support of, uh, delivery because I think it, it does help the people that are patients. And I think that we also have to look at the, the New World Order. Most of this is going to be recreational going forward in, in California. And yes, there's all, there, there's problems with everything and I think that prohibition was actually, I thought you were gonna go in a completely different direction, Rick. I thought you were gonna say, "Look what happened with prohibition. People were getting sick on the moonshine and all this kind of stuff and people were doing it just as much as before prohibition." And then, once prohibition was, um, taken away, that at least people were able to make money off of it and taxes and all of those kinds of things. And it made it...
Also improved the quality control issue.
And the quality control. And so my fear is that we're just gonna have the black market even more in Malibu. And as the mother of, uh, two kids that are now in their twenties, that, um, I know what goes on in Malibu and I know what goes on in, in any city or in any area. Uh, my kids went to school in Oregon and my younger one, um, just graduated this year and went really fine in Oregon. Things went well. And yes, Lou, it is much smaller than California, but they've also been working on this, Jefferson, for the last, uh, the state. So it, the, it, it wasn't up to the local, um, collectives to, uh, start working on this when we passed it. The state had to put in a whole bunch of regulations and figure out what Prop 64 allowed and what it didn't and on and on. So I think that you're putting it on the, the local ones and it really wasn't their responsibility at all. It was, um, looking at, uh, I, I mean, the state having to, to make a lot of decisions. So I think what I would really push for is to allow, um, each medical marijuana, medical cannabis collective to be able to have, we can start off with one delivery car or one, I know, um, and, um, and let's find out if there's problems with it. I also think, I don't know, Bonnie, if you were able to look at some of the HIPAA issues that Dawn had brought up between, uh, our last meeting and today, whether you were able to check about that?
So far, nobody's told us exactly which aspects of HIPAA they're concerned about that we could compare anything to.
Well, I think one of the things that was brought up at the last meeting was that if you're going to have a staff person do the ride-along and they're seeing who is getting the delivery, that that might be some HIPAA, um, violations.
Yeah, only if they were to share that information with the public.
No, but your, uh, HIPAA says that you, you're, you're protected about your medical records and your medical, you know, diagnoses and, and drugs and all that. So if you know that you're going, if, sorry, I'll just use you as an example, Skylar. So if somebody is delivering marijuana to your home, then it's obvious that you're gonna be using the marijuana and that might be a HIPAA violation. That's...
Um, one, one thing we could do, um, I don't know, like, there are a couple of options. One is you could remove the, the ride-along provision, um, from the ordinance. It was, as I mentioned, I think, last time, the original, um, ordinance contemplated a much more restrictive scheme in terms of how deliveries would be conducted and, um, the Planning Commission recommended removing, um, some of those constraints about routes and, and things like that. Another thing is we could specify that it, it would have to be, um, a code enforcement off... Another thing is we could specify that it, it would have to be a code enforcement officer who's a sworn peace officer and that, I don't know off the top of my head what difference that makes, but it, it might alleviate some of the HIPAA concerns in that way.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think that it would just be important to get some legal feedback about this and maybe other cities have already done that. But I think that that would be important and maybe the code enforcement is the issue. But I think that there is a compelling need for delivery. And I think that, and there's no compelling need not to do the delivery. And so, and, and my other question is, if we ban our two dispensaries from delivering, does that mean that if there is a legal dispensary in Santa Monica, that they would be able to, medical or recreational, that they would be able to come out here and deliver?
No, they can't deliver within the city if we ban it. But what they can do is if, let's say, they were going, they can drive through Malibu to go to another city. So let's say they were allowed to deliver in unincorporated LA County, right? So they could drive from Santa Monica through Malibu to access that area. Or they could drive from the valley through Malibu to get to Santa Monica.
That's, that's what I thought. So again, I, I, Lou, I wasn't surprised your opinion about this. You're consistent. I will say that, as am I, over the years that we've been discussing this. But I think it's, you're making it into the worst-case scenario. It's, it's, I'm, I was reminded a bit of Reefer Madness, this, you know, kind of, which was a propaganda film, like, oh, my God, you know, the whole world is going to be stoned all the time and it's going to be this terrible, terrible thing. And I think that that's not what they found in other states.
Holland seemed to have done all right with that.
Yeah. And as the other states have been doing. And I think that it is, it's here to stay and I, I don't think that we should be banning it.
I have a couple of questions for Kristi.
I can answer your last one.
Oh, okay.
The last one that you asked me.
So I, I'm looking at California Revenue and Tax Section 34019. And there is no date in this. So there's no reason to believe that the eligibility can't change by making oneself eligible. I'm also looking at the League of California Cities Prop 64 Implementation Outline. And it likewise says that the excise tax, 60% goes to youth programs, substance abuse, education, 20% to environmental cleanup and remediation, 20% to reduce DUIs and the negative health impacts. And that a city that bans cultivation and retail sales is not eligible for the grants. So there's no...
So they're not eligible.
So at any time, if you ban it, you're not eligible during that time. And if you make your safe available, you're eligible. And you're probably only eligible for whatever that allocation of that revenue is from that point moving forward.
It's not automatic. It's a grant. So, right, you come up with a program and you...
To apply.
Right, exactly.
So we could apply for the public safety benefit of undergrounding all the power lines in the community based on the taxes associated with medical marijuana, for example.
That would be awesome.
Hey, I got a comment. We have, if I'm reading this right, there's, we have to do a couple of things that have been illuminated. One of the things we're talking about, the delivery thing, is probably a little bit of disagreement here and maybe it needs to be fleshed out a little more. So I'd like to make a motion that we do address the items that need to be banned, which is the recreational use for the time being and commercial cultivation or whatever it is, and just allow the personal cultivation within the state guidelines and not do the delivery at this point until we do a little more discussion about it. Because we're kind of up against a wall. It's 11th hour. We got a special meeting going here. There are a couple of things that we have to do to be in line with the state regulations. And obviously, there's, you know, more discussion to be had about this and I think we should go with what we really need to take care of tonight. So that's, I'd make a motion to do that. I mean, if you can articulate exactly what I just said, Kristi, that'd be great.
And I'll second that motion.
So...
And I'll second it.
All right. So gentlemen, take in, lady, take out your ordinance to 428. And I will translate what I believe just happened. And I've done this a little bit on the fly, but I think we're okay. The title will change to remove the reference to delivery. And then Section 17.75010, which is the purpose. You can see there in the first sentence, it has a currently 1, 2, and 3. That would change by striking 1, changing 2 to 1, and changing 3 to 2 and having it read prohibiting all commercial cannabis activities in the city, including delivery. Commercial cannabis, including delivery. And then everything, we'll just leave the definitions in there for now because we can use them later if we need to. And then we would delete all of Section 17.75030 and have it read instead, "It shall be unlawful for any person to deliver for retail use cannabis in the city." And then, I guess we could say, we should say probably medicinal or recreational cannabis in the city. And then, so the rest of it just gets deleted and then everything else just stays the same.
All right. The only thing I was going to add to that, which is at the bottom portion of this where it says, "Provide direction." We best get an item back in the fourth quarter of this year that outlines licensing for recreational sales, delivery, comortal, and commercial cultivation. So I would like to see, my amendment to that would be understanding the ordinance-related stuff at this time and getting something in, in the beginning of this coming year that can address how licensing can come into play for recreational sales, delivery, and commercial cultivation.
Make her the motion, accept that?
Well, it doesn't have to be part of the, it'd just be direction.
I don't think it's part of the motion. I mean, it's basically something that you want.
So should we do the motion first and then we'll go with the direction?
But that's got nothing to do with the motion, really.
Okay, that's fine. So then, in terms of the motion and whatnot, I would just say that I think at this point, we've clearly heard from members of the community, members of the medical community that recre, or medical delivery is something that there's a great need in this community. So I'd like to go on record saying that we need to figure that out because there's a great need for it in our community. And I am, I understand the, the concern related to, to approving that stuff now, although I think that we're in a place that we could do it. And I would like to see that, you know, hopefully that you guys would, you know, will get to the second part of that after this vote. So we'll go with a roll call.
So it's, we're going to introduce on first reading an ordinance to the City of Malibu determining zoning tax amendment 17004 to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adding Chapter 17.75 cannabis regulations to Malibu Municipal Code Title 17 zoning to regulate medicinal, I don't know, to prohibit cannabis delivery and to regulate personal cultivation citywide. And that's as amended.
Yes.
Do we need to actually say something about prohibiting commercial cultivation in there somewhere? Is that, do we adequately close that giant loophole that someone will drive a truck through?
Yes. That was in the existing ordinance. That's in 1775040 of the ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Which, for the public, I guess, reads, "Except for the medicinal cannabis dispensaries permitted under our code, all commercial cannabis activities are prohibited in all zones in the city."
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
No.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
No.
Motion carries.
All right. So the, the second part of this is the direction to staff. So I would like direction to staff to say that we come back with an item that outlines licensing for recreational sales, delivery, and cultural, commercial cultivation, and also comes back any outline on taxation in regards to, to manufacturing in general in the first quarter of the coming year.
And could I add to that? I, I would like, Kristi, if you could confer with other city attorneys and really make sure that we're not losing out by not doing something on January 1st. Thank you.
In an event that we're not, we will be here at the 11th hour on December 31st.
Possibly be losing out on is the eligibility for, to compete for grants on the excise tax. So for, so...
Understood. All right. Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to add to that direction?
As long as we're not doing other ordinance, you're getting information. And, you know, we're always willing to listen to information.
We'll have information in an ordinance shortly thereafter.
Well, yeah. We'll see what happens.
Yes, we will. All right. A motion to adjourn in memory of Corey Ireson.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you for coming. We'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal? Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullin?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a good evening.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.